Okay, it's two o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to start off the annual case.
I deleted this flag of the United States of America and three other of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody here on this line. And hoping everyone has a chance to read through the minutes. Again, promotion move first by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first resolution, IT one, resolution issuing a credit to Oswego County Land Bank Corporation for tipping fees. Okay, who's in the mood for discussion? First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Lockwood. Does anyone have any questions on this? I'm sorry, Chad?
I think he was the first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't need to be. It looked to me like we're giving them $100,000 worth of tipping credit and then reducing it so that they're only paying like half, whereas it's about the same as $200,000 worth of it. And I also noticed here that it's heavily weighted with cities rather than anything else in the country.
One of the land bank directors here can probably answer these questions best.
Sure. Well, it is, it is $100,000. It's not reduced. In the past, it has, ACM was reduced by 50%. It no longer gets a reduction at all. So it may be $100,000 credit, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we used $100,000. In fact, in 2018, we only used about $22,000 and change. And I think in 2019, we might use a little bit more than that, but I don't expect that we'll use a full $100,000.
In this one paragraph, it looked to me like it would still be in the group.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chad?
I, I'm thrilled that they're tearing things down and cleaning up. We certainly need that. My question is, are we offering a break to municipalities like for towns and villages that say they have to take a place down? Or are they, that are not necessarily in the land bank? I mean, I can think of a couple really bad places that have to come down.
We actually did that the first year because the Land Bank was like halfway through the year and we did that and said, well, the towns, any municipality probably didn't budget it. So we extended it through the entire year last year to request and we didn't receive any requests from any towns to take it down to that.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, I was gonna say, if you can do that, that expired last year. We gave them like a year and a half and we didn't have any.
Well, they have a current situation.
And maybe what we could, I know we talked before about it and we went through and we opened it up for all municipalities unless you want to do it by a case-by-case basis because I'm saying, I know you planned on saying something.
This building can't even be answered and it's right here in our area.
But there was, I don't remember it, but there was a limit because, you know, like the city of Oswego had, you know, like a factory that was.
Right. This is a, a large residence.
Yeah, it was designed for a large residence at a half price.
We had, each one had the break and then nobody had used.
Okay, so we could potentially apply for help in the event of a difficult removal?
Yeah, I think, I think Richard's put it in the law. I think, you know, anybody can request for a reduced fee and case by case and bring it before then, but we did it on the Land Bank, a blanket for any town to see if there was any desire for any of the towns to do a structure. I shouldn't say town, any municipality.
Last question, do we recover any tipping fees after the sale of this property when it's sold? No, just go the way.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chad?
If some village or town wanted to have like a junk cleanup day, do we offer any reduction for those people?
We do and it should have been CC down the ladder. The parish was about to or just did. They, we give them, both municipal, we give them a 50% reduction, you know, on the town line. It should be bulk items, you know, like how could, you know, this is cleaner to towns and they requested and you've already, this body's already granted, you know, give them the waiver for that cleanup day at the 50% reduced rate. And I think we already had three this year, Cleveland, Constantia, maybe the village of Fair.
You have a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eric Dunn, carries? On to IT two, resolution accepting a New York State DOT grant on establishing a capital project to construct a 10-day hangman at the Oswego County Airport. Can move to discussion? First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Martino. Is there anything you'd like to say?
If anybody got, has heard from the email, there was a typo on the heading of the resolution. It is a New York state grant. It's not a federal grant. State's willing to give us 865,000. Our local share will be about 100,000. With 10 additional aircraft based at the airport, which this will allow for, we can repay that within 3.7 years. So we get 27,000 per year, just rental revenue off of this. It doesn't include increased fuel sales. So that 100,000 will be recouped within less than four years.
All the money taken in will be directed toward payoff?
Yes, yep. Well, I believe, is that correct?
What's that?
That's not going to go back into your, that's going to go back into your airport.
Unless you need something fancy.
Unless I need more blackout.
The airport budget is part of the highway budget. This is coming from the highway funds fund balance. So, yes.
It's going to go back into the fund balance. Mr. Lockwood?
Do we have the people lined up for these?
We do. We have 18 awaiting let's rate out and this will accommodate 10. We should have two of them. That's an extra year, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, thank you.
Now, everything from coming on, it's, we're really certain.
Yeah, I want to say that this, we, we're getting a higher rate of payers for places of rent and that cuts down on the operation when we get the money from the airport. I'm not here to say, but I know it's dropped considerably since the last few years.
There's a, there's a lot closer to a break.
Break even.
Good. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Thank you. IT three, I don't know, Phil, should I make a change to this?
This, I'll pass it around. The, we need to, it's the same project, but we need to replace the resolution. It's in your packet because the funding source is different. And you'll probably see more, us need to do more of this type of thing as we get down to the bottom of the barrels that the tobacco money was put into. We're closing out projects and cleaning up leftover monies and tobacco monies and diverting them into other projects so that we use tobacco money to pay for those projects. And this is the first example. We have a bridge over Waterbury Road that needs to be replaced. It's 250,000 dollars. We've got a little over 100,000 left in the tobacco bridge reserve. So what we're going to do is Capital Project 82, which is also funded with tobacco money, it's finished and there's a little over 14,000 left, even in your budget. And Capital Project 38, which is the bridge over Catfish Creek, original authorization is 850. It's not going to cost that much. So we're reducing that authorization by 55,000. So 55,000 and 14,000 will go into the bridge reserve. That'll give us the 250,000 we need to do water berry road. So it's another bridge you get done with tobacco money instead of tax credit.
Do I need to make a motion to amend this?
Um.
Or we just change this as?
I would, I would, I would motion to replace and vote on that and amend the resolution.
Okay, looking for a motion to replace. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Holt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Now, I'd like to make, make a motion to accept the, the, the change resolution. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Holt. I believe Phil explained that. No, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eric Dunn, carries?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. IT four, resolution authorizing budget modification to transfer funds from insurance recovery fund to highway supplies and expenses. That's pretty much all explanatory in the title. We had recovered some money to the general insurance company at a amount of $316.99. Can move that over? First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. Discussion?
Yeah, there's a typo there on this, both on the resolution and the info memo. You got DM 3130, which is the D 5110.
So the number would be D?
D 5110.
5454, as you know, they'll say the same. Is that the only change?
Yep.
Should I make a motion to?
Make a motion.
As amended.
Make a motion to amend.
Correct. Yes, well, we have to resend our.
How's that work?
No, okay. There was a motion to accept the resolution.
That's correct.
You sent a motion to amend.
Okay.
So you vote on that.
On that.
Then you go down the original resolution as amended.
Very good. Have a motion to amend by legislator Twist, second by legislator Martino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. The motion's amended.
As amended.
As amended. Move that. That way we already had a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Thank you. Thank you, Phil. IT five, resolution authorizing budget modification, transfer funds from insurance recovery into highway street equipment. Okay, want to say anything on that?
Oh, this is to replace, we had the accident earlier this winter down there on 49 where the pass away, which is to replace while we got damage.
Well, I understand. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Holt. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Okay, IT six, resolution authorizing budget modification for facilities and technology. This one I would choose over there.
I've had a bad six months. We had some unanticipated expenses, a couple of big water main breaks and a heat exchanger. So I've kind of used up quite a bit of our funds in the repair line that I had 181,000 dollars for. And also, last year, the city of Oswego is requiring remote water meters because I was planning to do a meter of the month type thing through the year to lighten the blow, but since I've had such large expenses, I'm not be able to do the meter of the month club. And then the village of Mexico informed me just last week that they want 1800, we have to pay them $1800 to purchase a remote reader for the water, we, water meters in Mexico as well. So with all that going on, I'm requesting $50,000 from unappropriated fund balance to replenish this line so I can take care of the water meters. I have a couple dollars left. And also at the house department, when they had their most recent drill, it was identified that they didn't have automatic doors. So people had issues potentially accessing the building. So there's also $8,000 just there to make two doors automatic. They have to help.
Okay, a motion for discussion. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Holt.
That's an EDA issue, right?
That was my question. Any other questions? Anyone else? Mr. Chad?
In your budget line, you don't have an unanticipated emergency fund if there?
The repairs, the repaired budget is for the, that 181,000 dollars a year is for contractor repairs throughout the year through all county buildings. And the two water main breaks fall under that. One water main break probably would handle in here, but it's just the two of those and a heat exchanger.
Will you explain the remote water meters? So these are on our county buildings?
Yes.
We have to purchase them?
Mm-hmm.
So we have to purchase them for the city of Oswego and for the village of Mexico?
Correct. And, you know, and they're just making that requirement so they can eliminate the person physically walking into buildings and reading the meter.
That was actually like quite a part of my question. I know they had mentioned that a couple of years back and this was a, it's been ongoing issue in the last couple of years.
They've been whispering it, hey, get your, get your meter. Now, when we get our bill, they'd say that you're, are in non-compliance and you potentially could be required to have your water shut off here. So I understand.
I have Aqua and they have automatic readers. They drive up.
Right, this, this is what this would be doing.
But why do they need to do it?
No.
How much stay outside?
Yep, there you go. So that you keep them out of the health.
Yeah.
Got it.
They do, they have to go in?
They go physical in the buildings.
Okay, and then bringing out what we have to back up.
I, I will point out that pretty much every municipality that does water is doing so. They pay for the initial water meter and after that, when you upgrade, if you own a home, you have to pay for it, which is kind of how it works. So.
We had to buy one off the garage. We filled up our storage and stuff. Put the meter on, pump it in and then take the meter off.
Only Oswego County can buy water.
There it is.
It should be quite a while later.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna do it. Any other questions?
One more question. So do you, have you used about 63% of your budget thus far?
Yes.
So you feel you'll go under if you use what's left in your budget?
I, I will definitely go under. If I do these projects, it is written, we have miscellaneous repairs that come up all the time. Compressor on a, on a heat pump is a couple thousand dollars. You know, if we have a boiler issue, anything goes down, we have a maintenance.
We need to budget more in the reserve.
We, actually, this is the first year I've actually been able to get along with the 81,000. Actually, it was 191 when I started. We were able to reduce it by 10 and, and do many additional items that weren't emergency repairs through the year. This is our first year we're running into an issue with three large items all at once beginning of the year. I'm comfortable with the 181 for next year, actually, right now.
Did you do all the water main break stuff yourself?
Just contracted. And we'd seen contracted because of the type of buildings, you have a medical facility, the hospital, they all couldn't pay.
Any other questions?
It broke inside the building?
No, they're exterior water main breaks. They're in the parking lot, parking areas.
So wouldn't that be the supplier?
I'll, I'll, I'll pass the road. That's a certain distance.
Usually it passes the meter if it's outside, but I know.
Okay.
Oh, I wish. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any carries? On to bid reports. Okay, first bid is for the, OS W 05-19 Aircraft Apron Rehabilitation Project. Okay, so it's here, our little bidder is WD Malone's. It's 1,692, 242.
Is it Marcy?
No.
It's Marcy.
Marcy.
Marcy, yes.
What I got here, they're showing me.
1-1, 2-2, 6-5, 1.
Oh, it's out of order.
Okay.
There's still, I have it out of order. So the low bidder is Marcy Excavation.
Yeah.
So it's okay. The amount of 1,122, 651, 25. Okay. Any issues with that company?
No, CNS has used them before. They're actually a subsidiary of Reichenberg. Reichenberg is doing references properly right now. CNS has used Marcy before.
Understand. I'm assuming they comply with all of that.
Yes, yep, they, yep.
Understand. Motion to move it. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Martino. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Okay, bid number two, OS W 0619 Metal Fight. For, we save on nature, like, fight or repair. All right, what do you, no. Make sure I get this one right.
Yeah, this is a multiple award. The low bids are indicated by the yellow heart. They're being awarded, awarding. Oh, here's the bike one?
Holy cow.
Subtotal A.
So the first one would be Lane Enterprises, sub total A, and the amount of 44, 214, 299.
99.
214, 99. Okay. Do we have to do, do these all individual, Phil?
No, you can award it as recommended because they're all, these are the low bids.
Thank you for saving me some time.
In your eyes.
Man, my eyes, times are really bad.
Although, hold on. Kurt, there's a couple that are ties. The Syracuse recommend you award to both or pick one.
We awarded both. This for availability. If one doesn't have it, everyone's got it. You just grab it.
Okay.
The ideal is to award both of them.
Okay.
And you're okay with that?
Okay.
I'd like to, should I amend that motion to accept? Accept it as presented?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so amend that motion to, as amended. Yeah, amended by, first by Martino, second by Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Motion to amend, or motion to accept?
As amended.
As amended, yes.
As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? On to bid number three. Plastic Fight for W 017-19. Plastic Fight, this one isn't broken down in many different ways, is it?
No.
Your little bits advanced drainage system.
Easy.
Understood. This one here with the advanced drainage systems and the amount of 645, 179, 98. Motion to move it.
Move it.
First by Martino, second by legislator Twist. All good with that, Kurt?
Moral of the story is you buy plastic.
Exactly.
That's correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You don't know where you're going.
No. Carries? Okay, number four. Electric Scissor Lift, 02, OS W 02-19 Electric Scissor Lift. The earth maintenance mechanic staff requires use of indoor lifts to safely access land equipment. Okay, looks like we received one, four responses. And, oh, wait a second. According to this, the low is Skyworks, correct? Low bidder being Skyworks, 36,755. Motion to move that. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? I guess, type four, down to the number five, OS W 025-19 The Sale of Scrap Metal. The solicitation process of maintenance and inspection generators to public wave of kind of town. It's always blocked scraps and offers transfer stations periodically offers like a scrap. Okay. Number response is nine?
Well, there's a.
I'm trying to understand the solicitation process, but I didn't want to read, read into, do you understand that one?
I think they've got some things mixed up. I think it's mixed up a couple bids here because we didn't go up the bid for preventive maintenance and inspection of generators.
I understand. Do you understand that, or is that midway down?
It's a station, right.
But they do have the bid tabulations.
Right.
Right around there.
It doesn't affect the bid. Right, yeah, search me, yep.
Right.
Maybe the copy and paste stuff. Copy and pasting has always had something to do with desire.
Understood. That's not what affects us. In this case, we want to go with the high bidder, which would be Flood Drive Properties, correct?
Yes, Whitesman and the license plates, right?
Yes. Would be Flood Drive Properties at 112, 11250. And with the license plates, Whitesman Shredding.
Yep.
Motion to accept. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries? They have a vacancy, annual request from Harbor Fest. Want to say anything on this, Phil?
Annual request that we've always granted for use to parking lot. After our business hours.
And again, motion to move. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? This would be same type of thing, only this is, I don't think we had before. Request for space from Central.
Yeah, on June 25th, 26th and 27th, they just want to be able to use, I think, this conference room after four o'clock is a customer service outreach project that they are doing.
And we're discussing, legislator Martino, second legislator House. Any questions? Is this something, is this something that we just, we haven't done this in the past, but?
No, they've made some changes. They're just looking for space. They have public meetings to let their, go over the changes of your customers.
Understand.
Is, this something that, I mean, we, is it something normal? We allow people to just have meetings here all the time or? The Central, Central is, receives funding through, through the county. It's a public transportation system. So it's a quasi-government.
Right, I understand.
You do have other nonprofits and stuff that the Land Bank needs here, the Leadership Coalition needs here, but I sent the acquisition.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? From the Agri Culture Society, the county fair. This is the annual request for tipping fees. Anything I say much?
No, this is something the fair does every year. You're talking about six tons a week. So 450 bucks, you've always taken it.
Understand. Motion to move. First by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Holt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any none? Carries? Okay, sorting departments, facilities, technology, project updates, real fast.
Um, last guy has two more sections of rubber to replace, which are scheduled for Thursday and Friday this week for last guy. But we should be buttoning up early soon. Um, Hyvek project, uh, two out of the three were installed in Fulton and are up, and then one's running, one is in Dale Purser in the basement, and that's going to be up on, running on Wednesday. One, we did run into an issue with ductwork, if one of the units were replaced, and so there's a modification that takes place. Um, at the jail, Public Safety Center, starting June tenth, there's three pick days where they'll be picking, uh, all the units off the group at Public Safety Center and replacing them. So we just got word on that before or after this was, um, written, so we have it in June. Uh, LV Brickwork, Lepini continues to, how to march along, they're still on target for, uh, being done and out of here before Harbor Fest. Uh, we did have a quick pickup meeting with fully construction, they've mobilized, uh, they're working right now in the, uh, basement, getting ready to tear out some flooring. Just moving along, and also going to work, and be working in the park direction steps, again, make sure it's done aheadside before Harbor Fest, kind of, Harbor Fest. Uh, DMV and Record Center, uh, probably the biggest thing is we're still friendly, three weeks behind there. Um, they did submit a recovery schedule at the end of business on May, May twenty-fourth. Um, there was some issues with even that schedule, so on Wednesday's meeting, it's coming Wednesday, they have every two week meeting with the contractors and, and touch or touch. Uh, we've got a sort of meeting with some senior management, maybe the team for selling, to ensure that their recovery schedule is accurate, and, and they should recover on time, so we're, uh, waiting for that meeting on Wednesday this week.
Okay, any questions on that? Questions, question?
Hey, is there a performance bond in the contract for them running late, if they run really late?
Uh, there's penalty, yeah, there's penalty for, or, or, there's penalty for late, and, and, uh, they also get a prize if they get done right.
Well, it seems like they might go twice.
Yeah, definitely, something like that. Okay, thank you, Jim.
Scat the animal or something, must be a lullaby.
We don't want to know where.
Okay, and next, we had a discussion on the snow and ice contract. I just wanted to let you know that we did meet briefly last week with Kurt, Pat, I said, and Jim Kelly. This is something that's been ongoing for the last couple of years, reviewing, we collected data through the, uh, past page of work and looked at all the, reviewed everything. We had some towns on the per cost per mile, and most of you are all familiar with this. And it's getting time to that point, that we had set a goal a couple of years ago, that within a couple of years, we will be going to the per mile rate, and that's where we're at now. We've had enough time, or, I'm not going to get into it too much, I'll let Kurt speak on it. We have had time to collect a lot of the data and see what was coming in, who's, what's and where, see the amount of time sold per day and whatnot. Without getting too much into it, I'll let Kurt, uh, say something on that.
Yeah, we. Couple years we've been into it, I guess, we've got, we've only got like, um, six towns, seven towns right now that don't do it. Um, the ones that are doing it, I think are happy. Um, a little bit on the borderline, we might be a little bit low on our price per mile for some of them. And, uh, but we're looking at different ideas, maybe doing some sort of a, like, an incentive thing, you know, as far as. You buy whatever, you got standard controls or whatever, you're trying to do this. We're going to up things in increments, if you guys want to do something like that. Um, we're, we're going to have, uh, we were going to have a meeting this week, but they got the town heads are, uh, schooling down in Portland this, this week. So we got it set up for next week, they were going to meet with the towns, kind of give out some of the ideas and see where, where they're at, and, um, if not, then I guess we better be prepared to, uh, do them ourselves.
As to, uh, we all said, yeah, I mean, as you all know, we've, we've had more than ample time for Kurt, and especially within the last year, because over the last, say, three years, as we all know, the snowfall and many different factors have all come into it. So it's given us really good opportunity to evaluate, not just the amount of snowfall, but how that affects this. And the whole nine yards, everything, um, Kurt's talking about is, as far as the incentive thing. Some towns currently mine their own sand and do certain things that alleviates the burden from the county having to do that. You know, we assist them with the use of equipment, and if we can get more towns to do that, it really does help the county out, the way we do things. And that's one of the things we're trying to encourage, to get these people to do. So that's why when this whole thing rolls out, I think that'll answer one of the questions, you'll see some towns may get X amount per mile, and some may get a little more. You'll notice that the ones that do get a little more, perhaps are up to date, have the, the equipment, as far as monitoring, uh, flow control, and they're mining their own sand and doing their own things. You'll see that those are, that's the direction we want to see towns go, so you're going to see that a little bit higher, you'll see. Back and forth on that, I know this is kind of a hot topic around the county, everybody, every town has had, uh, some issue with that. I don't know if anyone's got any feedback or any questions, anything we can answer at this point. But it, I mean, at any time, feel free to contact me, but this is the direction we're heading. And this is the direction we all agreed that we needed to go with the cost per mile. And if it's, we're going to set a date, that's, you know, if there's X amount of towns that aren't signed and on board by that date, or at that following meeting, we're going to probably send out, uh, an RFP to get a, uh, price spot, a, uh, private contract, whatever we can't handle for the county. There's no doubt in my mind that the county could handle it, but clearly we have to set that date early enough in the season, so it gives us time to prepare. If there's, say, four towns that don't want to do it, so be it. And either the county will do it, or we'll have someone take care of it, we have to, the only way we can look afterwards best for the county.
The other thing that we were looking at was, um, to extend, uh, life of the contract, right now we do it year to year. Where I think we should push it to, if we're going to go per mile with everybody, we should push it to a three-year contract. But again, that would be, that's committed.
Do you think that would work best for them?
I think it would, because you have the town times, and if you have the county time, they decide that you really can't handle it. I think so, because it's, it would pay you back some of what we do with the state, we're always three years out.
Right.
So if something ever happens, we're covered.
All right. And it also gives us a time to prove what we've already gone through and evaluated, and the fact that some years by going to the cost per mile, you can budget X amount of dollars. And one year, it may be light, the snowfall may be light, and they may come out ahead. The following year, if it's a little heavier, I believe the numbers we come up are more than fair, and I believe it's going to cover that. And by having a three-year contract, like Kurt's saying, now we have a small group looking at a three-year thing, we'd like to make out over the course of this three years. I think you're going to find out that it's not only beneficial to the towns, but the county as well.
Yeah.
Let's see your shot.
Um, Kurt, question, I, I don't know if it's in the contract or not, but they always picked up all of the sand material along the shoulders of the road, which I feel is interesting, as well as an aesthetic issue. Um, after they put tons of material down, you got sand all over the place, they can sweep it. Nobody's picked a thing up in the last two years. Do we, is that?
On high road, Jimmy.
Yeah, yeah.
Because most generally what we do in springtime at night, when the guys aren't plowing, so they're out sweeping roads. So we try to sweep all the, all the roads.
Do the towns sweep it off?
Um, most of them don't have sweepers, but usually what the towns will do is they go around and do intersections. Like, when you pull in that intersection, pick your plow, there's always a mountain of sand or something there, and a lot of times the town will take care of that. And the towns that do have sweepers, they go around, they might not necessarily sweep the whole road, but they will sweep intersections and stuff like that.
They used to sweep a lot more when they do that.
We're also, that's one of the goals, would this cost per mile? I mean, every one of us in every town have heard the same complaint, why are they out, there's been, without getting into a great debate about it, there's been a lot of times where they may have gone out excessively, and we're hoping this cost per mile is really going to come back. The, the incentive.
Do it out of the back, give it anyway.
And run more efficiently. And that will hopefully reduce what you're talking about, the amount of stuff on the side of the road, I think it's going to reduce that. Because it is going to reduce the amount of times they're going out. You know, it's, it, it's about getting everybody to do it more efficient. And I think overall, it's going to work out best for everybody. Does anybody have any?
I know Melper was through Highway Super for years, and I mean, you know how it, how it goes, I didn't know if you had any input or anything, yeah.
I'll just be quiet.
Understood.
I would like to know, back when this first started, you were going to be looking into where some towns are paying twenty dollars an hour, and others are paying twelve, some way to help make that fair, I haven't heard that mentioned at all.
Right, I think when you look at how it's factored into your, for, uh, uh, rate per mile, it more than covers, because you have the towns that are paying even their health, twenty-five dollars an hour, and you have some that are only paying fourteen. That's all factored in, that goes.
Well, factored in a way, but still, the town that's paying fourteen is doing a hundred hours compared to the twenty-five dollar one at sixty hours. So the town that's working at a lower rate is on the road many more hours.
Well, I think when we look at that, or the, it really doesn't matter how many times you're on the road, you know what I mean, that's, it doesn't, if, you're being paid the same as the other.
No, you're not, you're not being paid the same, because the, you're reimbursing the guy's wages that's driving the truck.
Or we're not going to reimburse anything, we're not reimbursing.
That's how you're figuring in for the cost per mile, is the man driving the truck, and the price of the truck. The truck's the same on both ends of the county, the hourly rate is not.
But that would actually put that town that's paying less per hour at an advantage, because they would be getting more money. And that's just the only guy that's receiving less.
You're seeing it the opposite from what I, so like I said at the start, I might just want to be quiet.
Understood. Any, uh, any questions?
Chico, I have an unrelated question. Can I ask that now? Are we considering a state of emergency along the river and waterfront areas, the rivers breached the sidewalks? I mean, or are we just going to accept this as the new norm? Have you done the river, huh? Boulders are coming out underneath, I mean, it's, I've never seen anything like it in my entire life.
In the city, I mean.
Oh, yeah, the city, the lake.
They already, they already is.
Yeah, they already declared it.
It's fully declared, what are they doing?
The city of Oswego declared one.
I mean, we have one.
We have one.
The county's got it.
The tributaries.
Yeah.
Uh, what are they doing?
Well, we declare it, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're just going to declare it, we're going to fix it.
Does it offer a funding stream for us?
Yeah. If it gets to that point, that, if, without that, you don't get the funding stream.
All right, without declaring the state of the law.
This is not guaranteed there's a funding stream, but you can guarantee you won't get it, if you don't declare it.
Don't do anything.
Right, so, we take any preemptions.
So it's staying in effect?
Yes. Uh, I have to renew it every five days.
A boulder, it looks like the size of a car came out down toward the hills. Yeah. I couldn't believe it. Well, beyond the hills.
I'm sorry, Kurt?
I'm not sure, but I think that maybe emergency management sent some stuff out to the towns and that, because we sent some stuff out to us that, for the state of emergency, if FEMA does decide to, um, supply some money, everybody should keep track of the time, the equipment that they use on, on doing this, whether it's towns, towns, city, whatever, so. As legislators, if you guys need to talk to somebody, that's what they should be doing, is keeping track of the time, and all equipment, whatever they use, just in case if they do turn around inside the, figure your money.
And because you have to have a certain threshold in order to be eligible for money, so you get the declaration, but you also have to have a certain amount of damage in order for you to be eligible for the money.
So each town, in essence, is kind of assisting with the pressure to the lake.
It's, yeah, it's critical that they all keep, keep track of all their costs, and we can add up everything. And this is over, like we did last time, to see if we reach that threshold. I just want to add on to what Phil said. You need more than just your payroll book, you need a list of what they did for each day.
Right.
You need two.
That's a lot of document, yes.
Every pencil.
Anything else? Actually, uh, I'm fed with that, and I believe that's it, I want to be against the emotion.
Second.
First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Chris. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very young. Waiting to hear.